Whatever it is that you do for somebody else. In fact, right now, all three signs are changing at a rate that's too rapid for the state law. And the state is supposed to enforce it, and they don't. That's kind of the way it is. And that's what's written in the ordinance now, or the one that's proposed, which means that it's not gonna get enforced anyways. You know, because the DOT, like you say, they have too much on their plate. Unless somebody complains, they're not gonna come in and do anything. And even if they complain, I mean, Hammond Lumber was doing those blue lights flashing all over the place. That was kind of dangerous. It took, what, ten, ten guys from the DOT working on that railroad crossing, you know, to repave it. And all of a sudden, you know, the following week, he was conforming with the sign ordinance. And then slowly started changing it again. But, you know, they're not looking to run around enforcing any sign laws, the DOT is. So if it's gonna get enforced in any rate, it'll have to probably be done locally, or you have what you have now. That's what's gonna happen. So moratoriums, pushing things off, no lighting in the village. I'm more concerned about the village. I'm not born and bred in Belgrade. Belgrade has always been a destination to go to the lakes. And of course, it's also got an industrial base. Couple lumber yards, concrete place, you know, it's got that. But the local people everywhere tend to misjudge what other people see in their own communities. And Belgrade has a golf course that's number one in the state. It has the lakes, and it's charming village and whatnot. I, I equate it closer to, that list that you provided is kind of interesting. Putting a rundle there, I, I would equate it to Agonquit more than a rundle, you know? Because Agonquit's got this charming little downtown area, and it's got a playhouse. And, you know, a lot of places to stay and whatnot. Kind of similar in that regard to Belgrade. It's got some waterfront properties on the ocean. Belgrade has waterfront properties, you know, and when you look at what you want to maintain, you know, you, you capture those things and you make the sign ordinance reflect what you want to get out of it. But this little triangle here, from one thirty-five down to probably only as far as Gagnes, that's probably the only place you really want commercial development. And you have to find a way to control that. And unless you get a zoning ordinance, this map lets you do it because it's been approved. This map, and one of the documents that I submitted, is a map overlay onto this map. And it says, this district does this and that. And in the listing, I have District Number One, District Number Two, District Number Three. The fine tuning, I think, that happens to make this ordinance be whatever it is that you want. I, I think I've, I've put the format together. Whether it's what you want or not, that probably requires some meetings, workshops, whatever you want to call it, public hearings. So if you're not ready to go for this whole package, okay. But don't, don't let that crazy ordinance go through.
Yeah, my compliments, by the way, on your first draft. It's a good first start. But I, I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. And first off, the commercial development review ordinance and the sign standard that's in what's proposed, it's too late to change that. We would have had to...
Can you put a moratorium, could, could, could the Select Board apply a moratorium to that ordinance separately?
That's a good question. And I think, and I, and I think if this, take this, we need...
I think it would result in the defeat of the ordinance.
The planning board needs to, Chairman, you need to go to the next select meeting and invite the rest of us on. And we're gonna talk about what the priority is, and we can have Mr. LaSalle there talk this out with the select people. We need to have a special meeting with the select people to talk this out as to what, how, we're gonna, how we're gonna pursue it. We're gonna lay it out. You know, he is a great, you know, Mr. LaSalle presented a good idea, you know, makes sense. Maybe the selectmen can do it, I don't know. But to have the conversation, you know, different ti- ti- different places, different times, not gonna work. We gotta get together in a special meeting with the select people. If you're gonna address, you know, bring that to the select people, you know, informally, fine, whatever. I think that's where we gotta go.
I'm not sure if this is what you're suggesting, Pete, but I, I, when I thought about this, I was thinking that we have two options in front of us. One is, I think, with Pete suggesting that we go back to the Select Board and say to them, basically, this is what's on our plate. Do you want us to get prioritized, the sign ordinance over the shoreline zoning ordinance? Or our other option is to put our heads down and work this out amongst ourselves, you know? The, I mean, regardless, whichever ordinance we decide to work on in the next couple of months, say, our first... We, we can work on both, or we can work on just one and then take up the other later. But nothing's gonna be ready to go to the voters until next November at the earliest, I would think. And if we're gonna do it a decent job, and, and I, the... I mean, it's so late in the game that, you know, doing a moratorium, I don't think, I think that would just incredibly confuse the voters.
Yeah, but since they voted to let us move ahead with this, on this section, did they take on the responsibility of setting that section aside?
I didn't hear anything to that effect.
But I can, I can see where, I can understand where Mr. LaSalle is, you know, reading it that way. Again, I'm coming back to, to make it, to move faster on it than what you're talking about is, we need to have a special meeting within the next two weeks or whatever. Next, get on, get on the agenda for the Select Board and, and, and get it done quick. Find out which way we're gonna go and talk about it.
It's either that, or we say to the Select Board, our next agenda item, a major item, is the shoreline zoning ordinance. Been on our schedule for the last six, two years. That's our next thing. After that, we will address the signage ordinance. Because my personal opinion is, the signage issue was not even an issue to the town until a month ago. Now, all of a sudden, it's like, hurry up and do it, it's top priority. I don't know how we get from not being a priority at all to being, oh, you gotta get working on it. My, my thing is, we could just as well tell the selectmen, we're gonna do shoreline zoning next, and then we will take up the signage.
And I agree.
But they wanna tell us different...
But I agree, agree with you. But that's why we have, you know, the planning board and the select, we have to have a special meeting, basically. Whether it's on a, on a scheduled select meeting night or not, to hash it out. We're at that point.
I, 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 I'm somewhat sympathetic to Mr. LaSalle's point that the... I, I mean, one hand, if town didn't have a sign ordinance, I don't, I don't know anybody who necessarily noticed the difference, frankly, in town. Because we don't have one now, and we've never had one. The sign standards in the commercial development review ordinance only apply to those projects that trigger that ordinance. And they're, you know, there, as many businesses get developed in Belgrade that don't trigger the ordinance as do, if not more. And so, the, certainly if somebody converted an existing, you know, is, well, enough of that. But, you know, I don't, I don't need to go down that road anymore, what triggers the ordinance. But the, so, you know, just so you understand, it isn't every business that's established in town that triggers the ordinance where the commercial development review ordinance, as it's written now, the current version, or the version that's, you know, amended. We didn't change substantively the applicability section at all, the, or proposed changes to it. So, but I understand you, you wish to have the sign ordinance basically supersede the sign standards in the commercial development review ordinance. This discussion, though, kind of reminds me of healthcare discussion. You know, are we gonna get rid of the Affordable Care Act before there's a replacement? Or are we gonna have a replacement before we get rid of it? And I would argue that if we're gonna get rid of the sign standards in the commercial development review ordinance, we not do so until such time as we have something to replace it. That we're, you know, all amenable to, and, and is, you know, well drafted, and, and something we can recommend to the voters. I, I, I mean, I, I don't know how else to proceed myself.
I guess I'm still thinking that going to the Select Board is an appropriate next step for us. For, for me especially, I suppose, to go to them and say, just so you understand, in context of the work that Mr. LaSalle and Mr. Keshal have done so far, in the context of that, that we do have a priority of work to, to, to do in a limited time to do it. And that is, so far, is to work on the shoreline zone ordinance. If they want us to, to not do that now, and then reprioritize our work, I would like to know that. I would like them to understand that we have an approach to what we're doing, and we're trying to live up to what the voters have voted for, and what we've already agreed to.
Yeah, I mean, listening to the tape, obviously, they did not discuss that. That wasn't part of the consideration in their, of that debate.
So I think it would be, it would be healthy for the Select Board to understand that we are mindful of our, an already set list of things to accomplish in this next year. And I want to be fair and realistic, though, to, to, to Mr. LaSalle and others who want the sign ordinance to, to get its fair shake, you know? Want to make sure we set realistic expectations, when we can work on it, when it could go before the voters, what it takes to get to the voters. Those are important things. You volunteered, and already put in a lot of effort for this.
I mean, we have an advantage, you know, th- this kind of reminds me of the commercial development review ordinance, and how we undertook that. We did that with the help of Katie Cog, you know, as basic, in this case, Mr. LaSalle would be basically our consultant. And, and the, and, you know, we may not agree, but, you know, at least we have somebody to do the heavy lifting versus our, you know, us personally, you know, in terms of drafting and the like. So that, that's an advantage. I don't know, you know, if anybody's given any thought to, when we undertake the shoreline zoning ordinance, you know, are we gonna do that all in-house here? Are we gonna try to go to the well one more time at Katie Cog? I think we've worn out our welcome there.
I would think we can handle that ourselves.
Well, I've assumed so, as long as you're on the board and, and the rest of you were on the board, that have more experience with it than I.
Yeah, my thinking about shoreline zone ordinance would be leaning heavily on Rich.
I mean, we have the benefit of the state guidelines. I have yet the, it was so long ago that I glanced at them, I haven't read them. But I don't know, you know, how much guidance there is there, but...
So, anyway, so, so that's, that's kind of the outline and stuff. So I want to make sure we're on the same page with some stuff. Because you asked some fair questions about, about, you know, should there be work on a sign ordinance? You know, what happens to the section of the current commercial...
Well, I, I would recommend deleting it from the development review ordinance at this point. Because the problem is, is that you're implementing something. Somebody's going to put up a sign, and then, you know, six months to a year later, it's gonna change. And it's just gonna be unnecessary heading. Since you don't have an ordinance now, it's not needed.
So wait, wait, I understand.
It would be grandfathered.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if the standards, for instance, at thirty-two square feet, here, here's the part that I'm looking at. Thirty-two square feet, Hammond Lumber signs a hundred square feet. And then they have a second sign. You're allowing two signs together on a, on a single property exceeding, not to exceed thirty-two square feet. Does that mean that somebody's gonna look at that building that's been closed down? It was, you know, the furniture... Yeah, right. And, you know, that, are they gonna spend, what, I don't know what the price is now, three hundred thousand dollars to buy that thing and put up another business and then say, what, thirty-two square feet?
Which place?
A print shop.
The Emerald?
Envelope.
Oh, the envelope place.
That must be Stilts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hammond Lumber owns that.
Yeah, well, they built it originally. But then there was this, the last tenant in there was making furniture for...
Right.
So, you know, is somebody going to look at that and say, what, I can't, forget? So you're gonna look at a million dollar property development that's gonna go by the wayside? Are they gonna want to go for variance? No, nobody's gonna go for variance for a sign because in, in this particular case, they might qualify for hardship. Because thirty-two square feet, it's still fifty-five miles an hour there. Some of the documents that I gave you, it was looking at recognition time at certain rates of speed. You know, it just, it becomes a hurdle for somebody to look at you don't need. And at the same time, that ordinance is gonna have somebody put up an electronic sign in the village? I mean, there's always this risk. And there's no permitting process built into that thing. So all they're gonna do is turn in a piece of paper to Gary, and as long as they meet the dimensional requirements, he can't say anything.
Well, I, I think we're still not on the same page here in terms of understanding that...
It's A and B, I mean, it battles a lot.
No, in terms of the scope of the commercial development review ordinance, it's very limited. So, for example, your, your concern is, one of your concerns has to do with the Belgrade Lakes Village. The, and some of, you know, it would have to be one of the existing businesses putting up a new sign for your worst fear to come, come to fruition. Because if somebody was to establish a new business, only then would they, would it fall under the commercial development review ordinance. So, for example, if Day Store wanted to put up a digital, electronic digital sign, we have nothing to say about it.
We wouldn't have any ordinance.
Yeah, right, we don't have any ordinance. And they don't fall under the commercial development review ordinance now. If somebody, but if somebody else, so this all goes to your point about we should do away with the sign standard immediately in the commercial development review ordinance. It doesn't make any sense. It would leave the town more vulnerable.
You need a permitting process separate from what this board does, you know? And every other town...
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but my point is, you're mixing the two together. And so, that's, it all goes to your major point of doing away, or more, or somehow eliminating the sign standard from the commercial development review ordinance. I mean, it's too late to do that. It's going to the voters as is, but the, but it, it, you know, you, you, we're, we're talking about two different things.
Is it, I mean, on the twentieth, they voted to allow us to do this. So in my mind, they set that portion aside until some decision was made here. So you could just say, we don't have time to work on it, it would be better to remove it from that warrant.
The, subsequent to your meeting with them, they voted four to nothing to move it forward as, as written. So, you know, it, that warrant article is written, it's been accepted by the Select Board, and it's scheduled for public hearing. So, now, if we changed that, it would kill that ordinance. And it would do far more damage to this town than the fact that we have a, have a sign standard in there that you might not like, maybe after we're all done, we won't like. But, you know, my recommendation is, we leave that, let that ordinance go into effect with the sign standard. Once we get the assigned ordinance written, we eliminate the sign standard in the commercial development review ordinance and say, see signs ordinance. And, and that way, we have a smooth transition rather than just causing all kinds of confusion. And frankly, confusion is not business friendly, being business friendly. I mean, that's one of the things we need to be concerned about here.
Well, except, you have no sign ordinance now. So if there's, if there was a way to eliminate it from that development review, then take it out, you know? Because it doesn't change anything. You know, you're looking to make it change.
It does, it changes things a lot because...
Hold on, that's it, it's getting late here. And I gotta leave pretty soon, but, you know, Mr. Chip, and you, you suggested that you're gonna get meet with, get together with the select people, and these, these conversations can go on there in front of them, and then, and then they're gonna give us some direction here, so. Sorry to cut up, cut in there like that, but I, I gotta get home pretty soon, get to nine o'clock, and, you know.
It's getting late. So, yeah, I would like to get on the next Select Board meeting and present this topic to them so they understand where we're coming from. I really want you to understand that, like, like was mentioned, that the warrant art, what was approved to go for the warrant articles, it's already happened. So a suggestion about removing a section up in the house, to me, would be very harmful. Well, no, forget that, it can't be done, because we've already, it's already been approved to go forward as is. End of story, right?
So maybe...
Well, and it would be harmful in the sense that it's just one small part of the ordinance. The bigger, the bigger focus of the ordinance is protection of the water quality of the lakes. It does a much better job of that than the current ordinance, which would, is what would remain in place if that ordinance didn't go forward at this time.
Right.
That's the trade-off. You're giving up better water quality protection, you're giving up better stormwater protection, you're giving up, well, we wouldn't have a light standard, a lighting standard, because there isn't one in the current ordinance.
Assuming that it goes to the voters and gets passed, does the Select Board have the authority to set it aside after then?
No.
Set aside the ordinance?
Yeah, to create a moratorium on that sign ordinance. In other words, there is no sign ordinance now. Basically, if they put a moratorium on the newly voted on and approved ordinance, they're basically going back to where they were before by not honoring whatever the terms are. That would be the only other way to do it.
Yeah.
Because I think that ordinance really does damage.
Not as much damage as not having it go forward. The fact of the matter is, if that ordinance doesn't go forward, the current ordinance remains in place. That requires no more a sign no greater than thirty-two square feet, and has since two thousand and one. So, you know, I think the better path forward is to work on the sign ordinance. Once the sign ordinance is completed, whenever that's gonna be, then make the transition so that all signs in town, not just the ones that, I mean, right now, a sign, a business that starts, starts up in Belgrade, a small one, that doesn't trigger the commercial development review ordinance because of lack of size or whatever, they can do whatever they want for a sign. The, but if, it, allow the commercial development review ordinance to go into effect with its sign store. It's gonna be two or three projects at most that will be reviewed under it over the course of the next year or so. And, and then make the transition to the sign ordinance once, once it's ready to go to, uh, once it's been ready to go and, and approved by the voters.
So that ordinance is not a townwide ordinance? It's only when the development review permit is required?
Right.
Right.
And not all commercial development needs a permit?
Yeah, it, it's, it's not like a zoning ordinance in that sense, because that applies to, zoning ordinance would apply to all new commercial or non-residential development. This only applies to a subset.
That is an excellent question that you brought up. I'm glad you did. I hope that, that the answer provides some context as to why we're approaching it from the perspective you presented so far. Does that help at all?
Well, it does, but I think that in light of that, if, if there was a separate sign ordinance, regardless of the development review part of it, I think that that would be a good thing for the town with regard to existing properties and all of these others, you know? Because you look at a, you know, I was looking at that thirty-two square feet, lighted signs, you know, the West Road, you know, near the golf course entrance. Why, why would you want to do that? I think it doesn't make sense, you know? Nobody goes by that, and it's basically residential, or, you know, from Castle Island Road down to the restroom. So those are the types of questions when you start looking at land use. Does this sign ordinance fit in? I don't think it fits in in a lot of places, and it needs to be fixed. And in your case, you're saying, well, unless that, that project gets reviewed, they can do whatever they want. See, that, that's a problem, in my, that, that is a problem.
Well, and I don't disagree. I, I, I've kind of come around to the point of view that having a sign ordinance, I'm not sure it's a priority, but because, you know, I don't, I don't know that we've suffered as a result of not having one up till now. But, but eventually, I think, having a sign ordinance that is townwide in its applicability and deals with the, you know, situation you just described, as well as others, like it, it would be probably a good thing. The, but I, I would hate to see some of the progress we've made lost because of this transition.
And I'll just say this, from my perspective, we can't throw a baby out with the bathwater in this case, because the commercial development review ordinance has a lot of good work in it already for other reasons other than the sign. So I feel compelled myself to try to see this through, you know? And if other ideas such as a sign ordinance come up that also make sense, great. We can work on that as priorities and time demand.
You know, Peter, and following up on Pete's suggestion too, about meeting with the Select Board, the other thing too, that that would have the benefit of doing, is I know from having run into Mike Barrett at the town office, that they've been discussing a recreational marijuana lounge and retail ordinance.
So yet another one.
So that, and that may weigh down on our head as well, and, and, you know, that would just, it's just silliness.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I feel that, or I would recommend, I, I recommend that a conversation take place that, you know, we get on the Select Board agenda, or whatever the next meeting is, to discuss this. I think that's fair, that's fair to all now. Setting, setting some sort of priority about this, this effort, as well in the context of other things that are going on, is a real good thing.
You know, you know, one thing too, we're talking, so far, we've only talked about the sort of interface between a, a townwide sign ordinance and the more limited sign standards in the commercial development review ordinance. We've gotta remember, there's sign standards in the shoreline zoning ordinance too.
Six square feet.
So we, we need to deal with all three. We need to deal with all three.
Your, your ordinance did include shoreline, and I think that's the place to do it as well.
It's a good point.
You know, you could, if you've got a sign ordinance, we, we could...
Well, conservation and shoreline, six square feet.
We can get rid of the sign standards in the shoreline zone if it's specifically dealt with, sign standards in the shoreline zone.
Yeah, and that's exactly the way, you know, I mean, I did that for thirty-three years. I mean, I, I didn't go look for any kind of planning documents. I was looking for a, a sign code. When I put these things together, I, I grabbed a half a dozen sign codes in towns that I thought were similar in, you know, what their attractions were, the type of highways that went through the towns and whatnot. And in other cases, I got more urban areas because I knew they had better language, you know? There's a lot of definitions in there. The thing you want to do is, you don't want to leave any stone unturned. You want to cover your bases everywhere, you know? There's not, there'd be any question.
Agreed, very much agree.
You know, that's why it's eighteen pages for a sign ordinance, kind of, wow, that's kind of...
I think you actually even have some definitions in there that aren't in the text.
They aren't in the text, but if somebody said, well, what's this? Well, that's what this is. Well, you don't do anything with it. Well, you know, just in case, you know? Because some people substitute language. The only thing that's missing, well, there's a couple of things missing. What we have to need, the, because of the lake situation here, there's a lot of private roads that have directory signs at the end of the road. That's illegal. Can you make it legal? I'm not sure that the state DOT would allow it, but I think that you could address it locally by saying, it has to be a private road, and it can only be so big.
Is that illegal because it's in the state right of way?
No, because it's, it's off premises, you know, because every... No, because it's, uh, uh, it's off premises, you know, cause every property owner owns their own land. And unless they share ownership of the road, if it's a kind of a development type of thing, maybe you can get around the law that way, but generally it's an off-premise sign.
I guess that's another one D O T doesn't enforce, I guess.
They don't enforce. But that would be a great one to put in the sign ordinance for Belgrade, because they have so many private roads.
Yeah, true.
You know, uh, you know, real estate signs, you know, they always, the real estate, uh, people, uh. Uh, named real estate association would always want to tack this on to something that I wrote. That you could put a sign at the end of the road telling people there's a property for sale down the road. And I said, well, it really makes sense to do that, but it's off premises and the D O T, uh, would get their hands slapped and threatened. By the federal highway administration taking money away, because they said, this is off premises advertising, not controlled. Now, that was the key, not controlled. So if you had a way of registering all of those off-premises real estate signs, maybe you could let it go. That would be the key, uh, in that definition. That was the, the last definition I put in. That the private road had to either be a, a registered association recognized. Or registered at the town, if it's not a registered association with the state. So it has to be an entity recorded someplace. I tell you, the element signs, I'm, I'm glad I retired, but.
Indeed.
Uh, but I think that this town could really benefit because, you know, the last thing we wanna do is you talk about sprawl, uncontrolled. This and that, you got properties that don't fall into that review, you're gonna get something else you don't want. Uh, there's a lot of residential and rural properties that have signs. And, you know, you have to control that too, you know, all zones, all, all districts. And that map, you know, this map does a pretty good job of that, but, uh, you don't do anything with it, right?
Peter, um, when you meet with the select board, uh, I, I think it, and just my thought, um, I would have asked Gary if he'd been here, but. You know, this is an ord, the sign ordinance is one that will fall largely on his shoulders. With the exception of those projects that fall under commercial development review ordinance. Um, a legitimate question or something that the select board needs to understand is that he'll be responsible for the permitting. And he'll be responsible for the enforcement and those are two new duties for him.
Right.
And this is a man, this is a man that's already issuing all the plumbing code permits and doing all those inspections as well as all the town's ordinance at, at fifteen hours a week.
Right. It's a workload thing and he's already resource constrained.
Yeah, so, I mean, and it also plays into the discussion in the commercial development, uh, in the comprehensive plan about the need for full-time code enforcement officer, of course.
Agreed. And this could actually.
Well, you have to start charging, you know, I, I think a minimum fifty dollar permit, it's not that big a deal.
Peter, if, if we're gonna, uh, adjourn, uh, I, there are two things I, I would like to see on the agenda for the next meeting.
For our agenda?
For our agenda, for, uh, if I may, um, and both have to do with sort of improving. Uh, how we communicate to the public about what's gonna be at our meetings with regard to our agendas. So, um, I was, if we could talk about that, uh, I, it's not to discuss it in depth here now, but, you know, for example. Having the, our agendas in advance of the meeting on the website, emailing it to the same people that get the select board's agendas, that kind of thing. And also having our meetings not just buried, buried in the bowels of the website. Uh, but on the front page, on the town calendar, like the appeals board and some of the other boards do. Anyway, if we could just talk about that at the next meeting.
That's, uh. So, so this is not a criticism of all boards?
No, no, it's just a, it's something we talked about when Mary was here and it just kind of got, fell through the cracks.
I did change some of that. I changed your guys' location on the website and I also put you guys on the calendar.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So thank you.
Cause the last time I looked, it wasn't there, but.
Yeah, it's on there now.
It is? Okay, so.
So maybe you could just maybe demonstrate to us how that works out.
Yeah. Well, it, it, for now, let's just put it on the agenda so we can talk about it. It doesn't need to be a long discussion, but.
And the second thing?
Uh, that's all one in the same place.
Okay, alright.
I think I'll second what I'm gonna do.
When's the select board meeting?
That's, the seventh, I heard.
Right, that's why they told me the sixth is the deadline.
Oh, really?
Well, right, yeah, they, you know, they said, okay, how long we have to turn this around? I says, oh, absolutely no later than the sixth.
And just so you don't, you know, feel like your, your time and efforts been wasted, I don't think it has. It's just a question of timing.
Cause, cause we, we were talking about just the logistics of this, just to understand. You know, like, public hearings would be required for, for a sign ordinance and you'd have to have two of them, right? And that takes time, because if there's, uh, you know, and before that event, well, we back up, help me out, this will. So you have to have preparation of the, of the ordinance, so however much time that happens, what it takes. You have to have some type of recognition that is acceptable to the select board, then back to the planning board for some kind of, the first public hearing. Are we good there? And we go forward and what happened then? Do we have to do?
Go to back with the select board?
Back to the select board, then a second public hearing? Then you have to be ready for some type of warrant article. So you can chew up two months easy.
Yeah, well, and, and like we did with the commercial development review ordinance, at least I would suggest that we have a public informational meeting for the, the general public. So, and, and for like the business community so that they can have their in, in, input. Because you get to the public hearing, you can't make any changes thereafter, so.
So, so that's real important to, to talk about too, because we did that for this ordinance.
Well, Danny, Danny was supposed to send this draft up last week to all the businesses in the business room. I was anticipating that once we got the notice that we're gonna be talking about it tonight, there would be somebody that would show up, show up, you know. I talked to Mike Hammond, you know, meeting, you know, so it's like, I'm not sure how much cooperation you're gonna get, except for people who don't like sign.
Well, I, I'll tell you, what I'm looking for is to make sure that we here follow ways to inform the taxpayers about what's going on. So all I'm trying to do is say that when we go through the steps, that it takes an, an ungodly amount of time, more than you might expect.
Well, maybe the first thing is a workshop to list all of the things and put a timetable.
That could be fine. That's not like a good idea from a planning perspective. But just to, just so we know that it takes time to do those things, when we talked about, you know, a public informational meeting, you know, there'd be adjustments. That's after all the work has been done to that point, right? Then you start thinking about, oh, what are we getting down to crunch time to have? Select board, then back to a public hearing, then, then maybe back to select board one more time, we'll be good to go. Then back to the, uh, public hearing and then ready for a warrant article. That just takes a lot of time to, to get that all done. Um, and do it right, cause that, the key thing is when you get ready to go with a warrant article, like we talked about tonight. When it's finally approved by the select board, say, this is the thing that's going, then the clock's done.
Uh, so you're saying that the next vote actually is in November?
Uh, this is seventeen, right? As far as I know, the.
I was told by Karen that it's not this one, it's gonna have to be next March. That's what Karen told me, I can actually give back.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And maybe that's, maybe that's the thing.
Oh, is that for the same reason that the commercial development review ordinance was held until March rather than last November?
Probably, yeah. Cause I asked her what's, what would be the next time this would be able to go for a vote, next year.
Cause what, what we ran into with the commercial development review ordinance is there were gonna be so many things on the ballot in November. That it was gonna be a real hardship on the staff in the town office to have the ordinance on the ballot at the same time. And we were kind of hoping, you know, maximize the number of voters that would vote on it, but, uh, so consequently it was held over until, um.
I can ask her again, she shouldn't.
Well, that could, yeah, that could be revisited possibly, uh, depending on when things are done.
But as an ordinance, uh, a new ordinance, that would be secret ballot and would not be, uh, county, uh, book, right? Cause this one that's coming up now is not gonna be a county, it would be a day four.
Right, Dallas, cause it's a war dart, so people will vote her.
Right.
I mean, you know, who would be checking, as opposed to seeing it and saying, yeah, I agree.
Well, that was my concern also, because generally this is a highly specialized topic. Most people have an opinion and most people don't know what they're talking about.
So.
Difficult.
So I think, you know, the actions really that have to occur now are going back to the select board to have a discussion about priorities and work, work. And then put things into context, knowing that we already have things, you know, in the hotbed right now. And how we, how do we wanna accomplish what, what, what you and Danny have worked on?
Well, alright, uh, none of them have seen this, right? You haven't seen what's been done, so they, they don't know.
You mean the select board, we, we've all seen it, of course.
Yeah, yeah, they've all seen it, no.
Yeah, no, we.
So depending on what you wanna do, I mean, if you want them to see what's been done, I'm not sure based on what you're saying that it's gonna make any difference anyways.
Actually, I did send the total select board.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they read it, but they were sent them. I'll send them in case.
So, I, I think that's the, the next.
Peter, do you need any help from the rest of us and?
Anybody who'd like to come, I'd love to have some assistance.
February seventh?
February seventh, six thirty.
So on the board up front, I saw it on the way in.
There you go.
On the sign.
Yeah, yeah, so you had a flashing mark.
Yeah.
I had, I had, I did, I did stop though, and I, I, I had to wait for about, um, forty-five seconds to get through all of them to come back to see what I was reading.
You didn't get rear-ended, did you?
No, but I was looking behind me. I thought maybe.
Are you in the crowd?
So, so before we adjourn, are there any updates from anybody about anything else? Gary, as you know, is out of sick today. I think I mentioned last time, maybe I didn't. Sean wrote to me and said he would like to, he can't continue on anymore.
Oh, he can't, so he's resigning?
He's resigned, right. So, um, he is on his cap. So we have to alternate.
Well, I mean, we're in good, still a good shape with.
You wanna get on the board? Plumbing board, is it open? Is it here? Think about it. Hey, it's fun.
I think he's already figured out that it isn't fun.
So, so Jerry, thank you.
What's that?
You're saying it's fun, I think you're stopping down in that whole store now by Yelp's like.